Let's take a second and talk about council procedures. The clerk says that the meeting on September 2nd has already been set. That's this week, so we're really talking about what happens at our next meeting, which is the end of September and thereafter. For September 2nd, all speakers are going to be in person. And we do not have the ability to, we've been told, to allow people to speak virtually. And Councilmember Kitchen has asked a question on that, so we're going to need legal counsel to address that issue for us. But on Thursday, it's anticipated right now, and it's set up for everybody to just speak in person. Like before the pandemic, speakers will use the kiosks in the lobby for speaker sign-up. So rather than going online as we have during the pandemic, we're back now to kiosks, which means that if somebody wants to speak, they have to actually physically come here in order to be able to sign up. We're taking speakers in two batches like we have been doing at the remote meetings. So speakers speaking on things other than zoning will be called roughly at 10:00 or thereafter, after we identify what we think's going to be on the consent agenda. And those speakers have to sign up by 9:45 here in person in the morning. Speakers that want to be in the second batch at 2:00 p.m. to speak on the zoning cases have to be here in person in order to be able to do that, just day of, can't do it online. And they have to sign up by 1:45 p.m. We close down the speaker sign-up at 9:45 in the morning and at 1:45 in the afternoon. So what we're just talking about is speakers for September 30th or thereafter. Council, you colleagues, you may have other things that you identify in terms of potential issues for us to take a look at? Seems to me one of the questions is, do we want to continue to take speakers in batches in the morning and in the afternoon? Do we want people to be able to donate time? Do we want to have people pull items other than council members? When we take things in batches, any one person can pull an item. It used to be before pandemic that if two people signed up, that item was pulled by speakers. In this case, they will, if we're doing it in batches, will have already spoken, they may inspire a council member to pull something. But there's that question of pulling items. Timing of speaker sign-up. Do we want to explore whether or not we can do remote sign-ups with the kiosk? When people have been signing up remotely before, we have a count the day before, so we're able to plan the day a little bit better in terms of how many people are speaking. That's also enabled us to potentially adjust the time for speakers to make sure that everybody gets a chance to speak without having to be here all day and us being here all day and well into the evening. So how much time for speakers is that issue? Whether that time is for all items they speak on or whether they get that amount of time for each item? Whether we want to make the time available considering, to consider the number of people that have signed up to speak? Whether people can donate time? But I think those were the kinds of things that Hi had identified. I think we need to hear early on the legal issue with respect to whether speakers can participate remotely. Anne, do you want to ask that question?
Yes, I wanted to ask specifically, I know that, and I just don't remember what all we explored prior to the pandemic, and it is a new day, but I do think that it's very important for us to do everything we can to allow people to participate. And participating virtually is very important. When we set up a situation that people can only participate in person, we're excluding part of our population, and we're putting them in a position where they have to choose between, you know, their individual circumstances and their own health or their families and their ability to talk to us. And I don't, I think we should do everything within our abilities and within the law to allow options for people to participate virtually. Everyone's circumstance is different. Some people can take risks, some people it's not much of a risk, some people it's a lot of risk. So anyway, so I want to, I want to know what our range of options are. And I'd like to know that first from a legal perspective, what are our range of options? We understand that there's certain practical, you know, constraints that we have to think through how we might do something, but I want to start with what are our range of legal options? And I'd like to understand the why behind it. I respect our legal department's conclusions based on the law, and I want to hear that too, but I also want to hear the why and what is, what's it based on?
Okay, council?
Mayor and council, we have Caroline Webster on the line, and she's available to address the questions.
Ms. Webster?
Caroline Webster, did you want me to go ahead? I saw Councilmember Tobo had her hand up, so I wasn't sure if I needed to wait.
She just asked the question.
Okay. Okay, so good afternoon, everyone. So the basic law in the Open Meetings Act is that members of the public are allowed to participate by video conference, but not by teleconference. Under the rules that were suspended by the governor that expire tomorrow, folks were allowed to call in by telephone, and of course, that's how you've been conducting your meetings the last several months. But once those are, once that suspension ends, then the only possibility is for people to participate by video conference. There are various technical requirements that apply to that as far as visibility, audi, like hearability, whatever the proper word is for that. But so we have to be able to see the council members' faces, et cetera, just as we have been doing. It's just that primarily the option of telephone communication is taken away. There must be a video communication. The law is special in some ways for the City of Austin and other large cities that extend into three or more counties. Most cities cannot use this video conferencing option except for under certain circumstances, but since City of Austin does extend it to three or more counties, we have a rule that we can, you all can participate by video conferencing, and so can the public. So basically, as long as the technical specifications can be adhered to, then it's legal for the public to continue to participate in, via video conference or in person in sort of a hybrid situation.
Mayor, if I may follow up?
Go ahead.
Is there, what are those technical requirements? Is it, is there a way to summarize those quickly for me? Or I don't know what level of detail they are?
They are quite detailed, some of them, so I can't really go into it that much, but it has to do with basically ensuring that multiple speakers are not able to speak at once. That everyone is visible. Of course, the council members, whenever they're speaking or voting, that needs to be visible. But also if folks are participating from their home, they have to be visible, they have to have a camera that we can see them, they have to be heard by all other participants who are either physically present or participating by video conference. So there are technical specifications that I'm sure someone else would be better qualified to answer than me, but that's basically what it comes down to, is it's not just you all being visible, it's the individual who's calling in or, you know, videoing from their home or from the library or what have you.
Yes, my primary concern is with individuals being able to speak to us, testify to us. That's really what my questions are around. And it would seem that FaceTime might be something that would be potential. Most people have a telephone. So, okay, well, that answers my question. From my perspective, and others may feel differently, but from my perspective, I would like us, I would like us to allow that option. I know that I don't understand what all the technical requirements, technical challenges might be, and so I probably need to hear that, but I think we owe it to the public to allow that kind of participation, so I would like us to see what we can do to do that.
Jeanette, anytime that you want to also join this conversation, to talk about any of these issues from your perspective, please make sure that you, that you do that. Mayor Protam and Councilmember Fuentes?
Thank you, Chair.
And it looks like Jeanette is also.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Go ahead. Jeanette, I think is also going to speak, but after you.
Got it. So thank you, Chair, and thank you very passionately presenting that concern because I share it entirely. I also think, you know, as an additional measure of concern, I think some of the technical requirements also are a barrier for a lot of folks who otherwise would like the opportunity to participate. So it's like, we're damned if we do, damned if we don't, honestly. However, I will say, you know, I had the opportunity to talk about this in an interview the other day. I can't tell you how many more of our constituents are participating because they can. Even, you know, with the frustration around having to wait on hold for hours, it's easier to do that than it is to wait at City Hall for hours, potentially have your item go the whole day before you actually get to speak to the council about your item. So I really, I just want to echo Councilmember Kitchen's sentiment about feeling very strongly that it is our obligation as a municipal body to do anything we can to make, to continue to allow people to participate in this process. I don't want to be too long-winded about it, but I can't emphasize enough the importance of having people who aren't born, raised, and groomed for politics to be participating in politics. Everybody should be a part of it. That diversity is what democracy is all about. And I think having folks who otherwise aren't a part of these conversations weigh in brings unique perspective, and it's critical that we all participate. And I'll take it a step further. I honestly feel like there is, you know, that there should be, it just seems wrong to ask a person who knows that they have additional concerns to put themselves at risk. And I mean that for our constituents, but I also mean it for us, the people who are a part of this body. I think about, you know, for me, for example, I've been very vocal about being immunocompromised, even with my third dose, even with my additional vaccination, I don't feel comfortable being in that building. I don't, I don't, I don't think we should have to make that choice. And I think, you know, especially for people who are immunocompromised or who by way of their age are, you know, have additional risk to consider, it feels to me like this goes against all of our attempts to make our process accessible. And it also frankly seems to me like there should be some degree of liability for asking people to risk their health. We take extraordinary, we go to extraordinary lengths to be compliant with ADA considerations. Well, I don't know how this is any different. So I just, again, want to express my deep concern and disappointment that this is the direction we're going. And I really hate that we have to, that we don't have any choice here. That feels wrong.
Okay, Jeanette, do you want to say something before we go to the next council member? Okay, Councilmember Fuentes?
Thank you. And I also want to echo comments that the mayor Protam shared about the importance of us being mindful of everyone's risk levels and reiterate my support for having a virtual option and allowing us to either explore the FaceTime opportunity. That's a great, great point, Councilmember Kitchen, to bring up as part of the audio-video portion of the testimony and also, you know, look at setting up sites within our libraries and our communities as another way for folks to be able to swing by their local library and provide testimony from there. Also wanted to share that I'm supportive of taking up testimony in batches. Of course, we'd love to hear, it seems like that would be easier on staff and on working families who perhaps only have a limited window to be able to be on standby to provide testimony rather than driving to City Hall and having to spend a good chunk of their day here waiting to testify. So also supportive of us having those batch allocations. Thank you.
Thank you. I know that it's been extremely helpful for a lot of the people in District 6 to be able to call in remotely. And if possible, I definitely think we need to continue with the remote sign-ups just so that it eases people's ability to be able to sign up for a council meeting. I'm curious at what point it might be suitable to go back to fully in person, given our current situation. Maybe we could lay out a timeline for that. Maybe we do something temporary now and then move forward. But I also think it might be helpful for us to get feedback from the community on what they would prefer so they feel involved in the process and can participate on what their preference might be. Any option that allows people to participate in government is important, and taking down barriers for that is incredibly important to me. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilwoman Cassard?
I just want to move, go through, I think, four or five of the items that you raised, Mayor. First, I agree that people being able to call in by phone has increased, and everybody's seen that it's increased the diversity of people calling in. Folks can just, you know, we've heard from people at their jobs that take, just step away for a moment, people on the bus have called in, and I think we hear, you know, families and kids in the background, people that can't figure out childcare can call in. So I think the phone option is something we should, we should, we should find some way to track how this has improved things and continue to bring that forward to the legislature for us to be able to allow that phone option for people. I understand and would be interested from the clerk and others, some of the complications about video conferencing outside the library. I think phone, we've figured that out, but I imagine that there might be different security issues and technical issues and other issues we should just think about and figure out on video conference. I know we have it currently at our libraries, but before we move forward with something more expansive than that, I think we should have the conversation. Because of course, we want that accessibility, but also want it to work. As far as pulling of items, I think that it has been good that council members choose whether to pull an item or not, because there's just been lots of instances where we've had maybe three speakers in support of an item, and that ends up having the item pulled, they have to stay all day and they didn't want to, our staff have to stay all day and they didn't want to. And so I think if a council member chooses to pull an item, that's better than it being based on a number of speakers. As far as everybody being in the morning on the general consent, I think that makes sense, and everybody being on afternoon and zoning, I would have the council think about if a set of speakers all want to stick around for the vote, if there might still be exceptions for us to say, look, this group of six or seven speakers is going to be here all afternoon, no matter how long it takes for us to take up the item, maybe we just hear about it then when it is fresh. I think that that, I'd be interested in whether that exception would slow us down or not. To me, it doesn't seem like it has slowed us down, but that might be an exception that we could consider. As far as remote sign-up, I'd be interested, from the clerk's perspective, how that has helped us or not, from the mayor's perspective, as far as how that has worked. I think it's more convenient for the public, but I would want to know how it affects our operations, but it seems like a good idea to me for the reasons Councilmember Kelly and others have mentioned. As far as donation of time, I'm ambivalent on that, on that issue. You know, potentially, we could say that, you know, you only have one person donate time to you instead of where we were before, where we were having three or four people donate time. But I think ultimately, people that want to just come and talk to us, getting the chance to do that in the morning and not having to wait around all day, I think has had very positive reviews, and we should keep trying that even in the in-person shift and see how it goes.
Councilmember Ellis and then Councilmember Tobo.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate you laying out some of these options for us. I am appreciative of the remote sign-up just because it helps us kind of see as we prepare for the next day which issues we might talk about more in depth. And so that's really helpful for me to be able to understand that as we prepare for our meetings. I do like being able to do all the consent speakers at least together upfront, just because I think it's respectful of people's time to be able to know at 10:00 a.m. they can speak or at 2:00 p.m. they can speak, and then they can continue to follow our deliberations, but don't necessarily need to have their phone on the line on hold for an extended period of time or need to wait in chambers for an extended period of time because we know that's hard on a lot of, a lot of people in town for many different reasons. And I do remember, I think there was one instance, it may have been a citizens' communication, where we did have someone participate from a library. So I think it was probably very helpful for that individual to be able to go to a city-owned facility, like what Councilmember Fuentes had already identified. So I'm supportive of that, and I think as far as being able to pull, to pull items, I think if we take speakers together, the way that the clerk's been calling them together, we're still getting that sense of when there's a lot of people signed up on one issue that they're really passionate about that and they think it affects, you know, their neighborhood or something they're working on in the community. So I do like having them together. I don't know that they need to be pulled off consent for us to appreciate that value in the community and to hear those voices. So those are, those are my thoughts.
Councilmember Tobo?
Thank you. So I think everybody on the council at this point, either today or in previous meetings, has expressed appreciation for the opportunities that virtual meetings allow, afforded our constituents to participate in ways they hadn't been able to necessarily before, or to allow opportunities for people who had not participated to participate. So I think instead of, you know, what I would like to spend some time doing today is talking with our tech folks and our clerk about whether any of the options people have suggested are options. And just in case people are tuning in, I think it's really important to reiterate that where it sounds like, you know, the great majority, if not the entire council, is really supportive of continuing those kinds of efforts and we're being prohibited from doing so by the state. So I would like to talk with our tech. I would like to wrap up, wrap up my comments by coming around to ask those questions of the clerk of what is possible from FaceTime to a different WebEx platform to other, other kinds of things that have been suggested. In terms of remote sign-up, it's not clear to me that that is where that falls in terms of legality or in terms of our technical abilities, so I'm interested in that. But, you know, a lot of the questions that you've posed, Mayor, are ones that we've, we've revisited multiple times now in the course of our time under 10-1. And so I'm not entirely clear why we're, why we would make changes to some of those. I mean, it's always good to review meeting procedures, but we have in the past spent lots of time talking about when, when people should be able to speak. And I think we had developed, before the pandemic, we had developed the practice of allowing people to speak in the morning if they're there in the morning, or allowing them the opportunity to speak when the issue comes up. I think, you know, as a community member who's spent a lot of time at AISD as a, as Ravel Razzo, I guess, you know, one of the complaints that I and others often had is that, you know, very often you were confined to the citizens' communications piece of it, and the issue wouldn't come up until later. And I think, you know, as a decision maker, as a community member, I think there's a lot of value of having, having that testimony at the time when decision makers are making, are considering and deliberating on that issue. And it also affords us the opportunity as council members to ask questions of people who have spoken. If in the course of our deliberations, we realize we have a different understanding about something somebody said and they're still here, we can call them back up to the podium and ask. I understand not every community member wants to do that. Some want to come and speak in the morning, and, and we have, again, in the past made provisions for people who wanted to do that. And, you know, certainly if they want to do that in a batched way in the morning, that's fine, but I, I want to see us continue to preserve that opportunity for people to speak at the time the issue comes up as well. In terms of the remote sign-up, I think that's a great opportunity, but I think people should also have an opportunity to sign up the day of an event, so I hope we'll, I mean, the day of the meeting, I hope we'll allow for that to continue. You know, very often the press covers issues on Wednesday that are happening on Thursday, and so sometimes people are only hearing about a particular issue that day before. And, and so there are some other issues that I think you highlighted for conversation, like the time, the time individuals get to speak, donation of time, and who pulls things from a consent agenda. And again, we've, we've had various waves of talking about those in recent years, and so I'm not sure why, I'm not understanding why we would revisit those. I think the compromises that we've made in terms of, you know, affording people the opportunity to speak for three minutes on each issue, unless there are a huge number of people, and then it starts cutting back, the ability to pull things, you know, the, when we have multiple people show up on an item, we know that that indicates there is, that's an issue we should look at more closely, and so it gets pulled from consent. So for those of my colleagues who have expressed what is really, I think, a request to change procedures that are, I believe are set now in code, I guess I want to hear a little bit more about why, why we're considering doing that. I'm all for opening up, I'm all for making our processes more accessible. Some of those changes, I think, go in the other direction. So that's, that's sort of a question to you all about why we would change some of those things, especially in terms of pulling things from consent and whatnot. But I would like to get around, Mayor, to asking those questions. I don't know if we should pause there, if anybody wants to jump in, but then I want to ask those questions of the clerk and.
Yeah, let's go ahead and give everybody else a chance to highlight their issues. I think then we'll ask staff then to respond to the universal things.
I thought you were the last one to speak, which is why I mentioned that.
Not quite yet. You know, for me on this, I think that all these issues are coming up now, Councilmember Tobo, apart because for the last year and a half, we've been doing it in a certain way, and I think we've been able to see what kind of practices result in, in meetings. I think it's been, I think the way that the meetings have gone over the last year and a half through pretty incredible work on a part of our clerk's staff has had meetings run pretty, pretty efficiently and people being able to, to participate as well as not leaving us in the position where we were meeting late on, on issues. And I think that that has real, real, real benefit to making sure that we're sharp and attentive and using best judgment. But for me, I would let people participate remotely. I think that's been a really great thing. I don't know what the technology availability is on that with FaceTime, but I would hope that it would be something that would be available to somebody as easily on their phone, if they had a phone, in order to be able to do that so that it's not just having to go to a library. But certainly, I would have that option available to somebody that wanted to go to a library that might not have a phone to be able to participate. So being able to participate remotely, if it was technologically possible, since it appears to be legally possible under certain rules, I would, I would have that. I do like people speaking in batches, and I think that it enables people to be able to speak and then to leave. You know, I just would cringe every time someone would come up to the microphone at 7:00 in the evening and say they'd been there since 10:00 in the morning, and they had to wait eight hours, and now they've gotten their, their way too short a period of time to be able to talk to us. So I like people being able to speak in batches. I also like people being able to sign up ahead of time because I think that enables us to really manage the meetings a lot better. And it also, I think, gives us the opportunity to be able to make sure that even on days when there are a lot of people speaking, we're able to order the day in a way that still lets us get our work done, but gives people a chance to be able to participate and not go to delays, which I think is, you know, unfair in itself too. So I think people signing up ahead of time. The, the practice that we had is I would then say to make sure that the council knew how many people had signed up to speak and what I was recommending in terms of how to manage that. And obviously, the council has the ability on any given day to, to see that recommendation of the chair and say, no, we think it should be, we should, we think it should be this as opposed to that. Asking people to get up and speak and letting them speak to all of their issues, I think, has, is also something I think that's been able to keep the meetings moving forward, so I would, I would continue to do that. Pretty much, I would have us continue to do most, if not all, of the practices that we've done over the last year and a half. Because I think that they've, they've worked well. Anybody else want to introduce anything else before we ask staff to kind of respond to the universe of questions that have been raised? Kathy?
Yeah, I also wanted to talk about procedures in the kiosks and things of that sort, but I, I also want to have an understanding of typically, we have a conversation around these issues. What's the, what's the plan for how we're going to make decisions about these issues?
I'm not sure there is a plan. I'm not sure there is a plan other than there...
Pardon me, Mayor, I was finishing my sentence. I'm not sure that there's agreement on all of these points. And I'd like an opportunity to really, where there's not agreement, really talk about what opportunities are there for making multiple possibilities available to our constituents.
And we can do anything that we want to do. I just felt, I put it on the agenda because I thought we should just address it affirmatively and give some direction to Jeanette and the staff. But there's no requirement for us to do or not do anything, or limit to what we can do or not do.
So should we try to resolve some of those issues today, such as whether individuals who would prefer to speak at the time an issue comes up have an opportunity to do that? Should we try to resolve some of the issues around, you know, who, how many, who, how, and when things get pulled from the consent agenda? Or do we want to give it a little bit of time and think about it?
We could probably do both. I mean, the things that there seems to be consensus on, or people feel we could give that direction to Jeanette, the things that, you know, the group wanted to do a different process or timing to decide, that can happen that way, too. So it was an opportunity for us to talk, mostly to see, kind of see where everybody is.
Thanks. And then I wanted to say, I really appreciate the way our staff have set up the chambers in terms of blocking off seats and making sure that individuals who are there in person will have appropriate distance from the person alongside them. And I would ask that we do that. I'm not, I haven't been in City Hall in a couple days, but I believe last week when I was in, I didn't see dots. There may be kind of dots at the kiosks, but my suggestion would be if there aren't, that we make sure that those are there and that there's kind of a plan when we have controversial issues for how people will line up and register in the kiosk, especially since that's not something you can do. Well, usually it is something you can do in evidence, actually. But anyway, those are, again, things that continue to bring, I think what would be helpful if we could resolve is what the technological, you know, again, one of the things we all agree on, I think, is trying to make it possible for people to provide video testimony or to join the meeting virtually. And just even as we're talking, I'm getting questions about what options will be available for that on Thursday. So if we could talk with our staff about those challenges and how we could surmount them, that would be really helpful, in the way that the county does, I believe.
And again, I think the rules have been set for Thursday, and I went over those at the beginning, and I could go over them again if people wanted that to happen. But I think that the clerk and staff are kind of locked and loaded on that. All speakers are in person on Thursday. Speakers will use the kiosks in the lobby to sign up and speak. We're going to run it in two batches, a 10 o'clock batch and a 2 o'clock batch, as we have been doing. Sign-ups get cut off 15 minutes before each of those, so cut off at 9:45 for that batch, cut off at 1:45 for that batch. And I would point out that there's nothing to stop a council member from calling anybody up when we discuss an item. Everybody has that ability. When an item's called, you can call up someone to ask questions of, and you can always do that as well. And we've done that over the last year and a half as well. Councilmember Kitchen, did you have something before we?
Before you, I'm sorry.
Before we have staff, Jeanette and staff speak to some of the questions?
Yeah, I do. And just, you know, I've already asked my question, then Jeanette can speak to it, but I would just ask her, as she speaks to it, to give us some timelines. I know we had this conversation before, so I know she's shared some information with us in the past, but I would like to know if we want to get to a point where we can allow for some virtual participation by individuals by our September 30th meeting, what's our deadline for giving direction on that? So I want to understand that, too.
Okay. Jeanette, you want to talk to us about any or all of these?
Well, first, I appreciate that you think I can solve all of these problems, but I can't. So let me say that, first of all, it's, whether or not I think it's possible, you will probably need to direct the city manager to make resources available for certain things, because there are things that are outside of my control. Second, we completely, as staff, completely understand the concern with COVID, because you are talking to probably four people that have been here from day one. So we completely get it. Second, online registration, it may be working for you all, but I can tell you it is not working for us, because it is a nightmare compiling that data. And so to give you an idea, for each council meeting, I probably spend a good 15 hours each week prior to the meeting, doing nothing but compiling and cleaning up the registration data. And that's just what I'm doing. That's not what my staff is doing with exporting it from one system and then importing it into the speaker sign-up system. So I have reached out to CTM about making the kiosk available for remote registration, and I have been told that they would need additional resources in order to make that happen, mainly from a security and risk perspective, because that server contains other applications that if we got a huge number of registrations coming in, could take the server down. I don't know what all the applications are on there, but one of them that I can tell you that would impact council meetings is our ability to upload agendas and backup for the meetings. That is one additional system that's on that same server. So they will need additional resources in order to make a more secure online registration form and process where the clerk's office isn't spending hours each week before a meeting, because we honestly cannot maintain that long going forward. I'll let Cory speak to the technical requirements. I don't know enough about FaceTime to know if that's even a possibility. I will tell you, the difference with the libraries and what we had done in the past from a non-technical perspective is when we had someone remote from a library, we were bringing them in from the library and putting them up on the big screen, and all of council was on the dais. The difference and the difficulty and the complexity is we would be bringing them in into a hybrid council meeting, where some of you are not here, some of you are on the dais. And so we're trying to merge two different conferencing systems into one, and we're not sure if we can do that. We haven't tried it. And so it would require additional equipment at the libraries to use that, because they're using, the previous system would not work for a hybrid council meeting setting. So they would actually need a dedicated computer, a computer there that people would log in, and their staff, library staff, would have to kind of manage those speakers as they're coming into the library. That is possible. It all depends on how many resources we have available to put towards it. Again, that's not my staff, because I don't work at the library. So that's basically the difference between what we had done in the past and what would need to be done for a hybrid council meeting with virtual video testimony from other individuals outside of the city. As far as batches, yes, it does make it easier for staff, but I will also point out, because I would be remiss if I didn't, virtual meetings are much more labor-intensive. And the example I can give you from my perspective is in a pre-COVID, pre-pandemic era, the clerk's office usually had two people supporting a council meeting. With the hybrid and the remote speakers, it takes five of us to handle the speakers plus the meeting. That's the impact to our office. And that's just my staff. That's not CTM, that's not ATXN, that's not anybody else. That's just the impact that it has on the clerk's office. Anything is possible, and we will do whatever council wants, but it does impact our resources. I will let Cory talk about some of the technical issues with the video conferencing and what we may or may not be able to do at the libraries and what we could or couldn't do with FaceTime, because I've never used FaceTime, so I'm not the best person to address those. I will say, if you're, I will say, from a staff perspective, the more complex you have your council meeting rules as far as polling and when people are going to speak, the more difficult it becomes for us to manage that and to be able to let speakers know, this is when you're going to be able, need to be available and online. So I'm just going to make that case, that batching does make it easier for us to be able to tell people when they're going to need to be available.
Mayor, I have a few questions about what the clerk said.
Okay, go ahead, Kathy, and then Anne.
Just a couple of things, Jeanette. First of all, I want to be sure I'm understanding. You're talking about batching, making it easier for the clerk's office, but you're talking about batching if we are allowing online testimony. Is that right? I'm just trying to understand whether...
So I'm only talking about, like, batching virtual speakers.
Okay. Not, because now, if the assumption is that most speakers have to be in person, I'm assuming what you said about batching and the impact on the clerk is not relevant. It's only relevant in the online environment.
Exactly. Because in-person, they can get a better feel, or they can hang out here someplace in City Hall and wait for their time. And, you know, we would track them down if they're in the building to come into chambers, like we've done in the past when we've had large groups. It's the ones that would be joining virtually to speak. It becomes difficult for us to know when to tell them to join if there's not a specific time to tell them.
Yeah, that I understand. I understand that completely.
So if you're going to do something like that, then the best option for you to consider, and you would want to do this on your Tuesday work sessions, is to identify a specific time for a certain item that we can then group people, like we've done in the past with the audio, where we had large numbers, and we kind of separated them out. Otherwise, it becomes difficult for us to give them instructions on when to be available virtually to join the meeting.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that that was really for online speakers, not in-person.
Yes.
And then one of the things you said that I have another question about, but maybe this is better answered by Cory, or Cory can elaborate, but you were talking about how the challenges of merging, of having the two systems work together of the library, the library online transmission, or the library video transmission with a hybrid system for council members. But is there an opportunity, just, you know, I think this is the way the county works, could everybody get the same WebEx link? And for those council members who are joining virtually that day, they're using that WebEx link, and the members of the community who are registered to speak are using that WebEx link. And when it's not their time to speak, they're just simply muted. Yes, I'm wondering why that can't be the portal, just in the very same way it's provided a portal for the whole council. You know, if most of us are online, I mean, if most of us are in person and there are just several council members who are joining virtually, can't they and the public use the same system?
I will let Cory answer that question, but I, before I turn it over to Cory, I will point out a big difference, because I have sat in on your joint meetings, is the number of speakers that the county has versus the number of speakers that you have, completely different level, and that has an impact also on the quality. And so Cory will talk about that.
Thank you.
Hang on, just one second. Anne, did you want to say something before they speak?
Well, I have some questions also for Jeanette, but I'm happy to have Cory answer this question, and then if I could have some time to ask some questions, too, that would be great.
We'll come back to you then, Anne. Cory?
Hello, Mayor, Council. Cory Ellis with Communications and Technology Management. Councilmember Tovo, to answer your question, the library, if we were to go the route with having public testimony from libraries, we could all use the same WebEx system, and we could all use the same meeting design that we are currently using. Meeting, the libraries would be on an attendee side, and when it's time to take a speaker from that library, we would just move that particular library over to the panel and accept speakers. We have initially reached out to the libraries, so they do know that this is a possibility, that we could be coming to them and asking for resources or for them to participate in council meetings. And we'll continue that conversation here very shortly with them to hopefully bring that to a reality. As far as taking remote speakers from accepting public testimony from personal cell phones and computers, we would not be able to bring those folks in to our WebEx meeting for, just fear of compromising the meeting's security on the attendee side. So we really want to either offer a solution that is library-based. There is also a vendor option that we're exploring. The same vendor who assisted us in managing our telephone testimony over the pandemic is developing an option that may allow us to bring public in via video from a personal device. But that is still in development, and we'll continue our conversation with our vendor in regards to that. I hope that answers your question. And in regards to merging systems, that's, so the route with the vendor, that would require us to merge systems. So their system is independent of our WebEx system, and those two systems would need to be merged in the room in order for two-way communication to be established in a secure manner. But we are currently set up to meet Toma guidelines through our WebEx system, and those guidelines can continue over if we offer remote testimony from libraries.
So Cory, I think what I still am not clear on, you did answer my question, I really appreciate it. I think the part of the question I'm still not hearing a response to is, how does that work from, how does the county protect the security of their meeting if they are using the same WebEx link, if they are, using the same WebEx link for callers and participants in their meeting? And maybe it is an issue of scale, that they have just fewer people, so it's less of a risk. And I guess to the extent of, to the extent that the risks aren't something that we should talk about in public, I'm happy to take that offline. But that's, I'm wondering if that model is working for them, if we can figure out how to, you know, how to keep our meetings secure, but do kind of a similar system situation.
Councilmember Tovo, I will need to reach out to the county to talk to them about their meeting design and the way they're accepting public testimony. I do not believe the public testimony currently is coming through the WebEx system. I believe it's coming through a telecom system and being merged with the WebEx meetings. I have not seen video testimony in a county meeting via, from a public member.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Tova, I think they're using a similar... Councilmember Tova, I think they're using a similar system that we have used for the audio, just a different vendor. So I think in the, early on, sometimes you will hear maybe discussions with Larry Schooler, and so he's the vendor that is providing the connection with the audio record, testimony from the public. So again, it's one, it's one person in the WebEx that is joining all of the individuals.
Ah, okay. Thank you.
Okay, Anne?
Okay, so there's, there's, we could spend a lot of time talking about the technical aspects, which I think is important for us to understand. But what I, what I would ask you guys to do is, you know, I'd like to take it offline and really understand the range of possibilities here. If, if, if I'm hearing you correctly, Cory, what you're saying is that you all are, you are exploring an option with a vendor, if I heard that correctly, an option with a vendor that would allow for video where people could, could dial in, just like they do right now for a Zoom or a WebEx or something like that. Did I understand you correctly?
Councilmember Kitchen, yes, you did. So there, we have initially contacted the libraries, just in summary, and the, the vendor that we are currently using to manage public testimony via teleconference has developed an option for video. So it is under development, excuse me, and we are continuing our communication with them and talks with them in hopes that maybe we could, could use that for, for our council meetings.
Okay, well, I'm gonna have to back up for a minute, because I'm trying to understand why you can't just do a separate WebEx or a separate Zoom, or there's a number of different systems that people use, that people can sign into. And I'm not, I guess I'm not understanding, I may have missed this in some of the conversation, but I'm not understanding why we can't do that, so that people can dial in. Why do they have to go to the library?
Councilmember Kitchen-
And why, what, the, the other question is, presume for a minute that the, whatever system the council members are participating on is separate. I'm just talking about a system for the public to dial into. Is, so what is the security concerns about that? If you have a, you know, set up a, you know, and I may just not be understanding, you set up a meeting on Zoom, you know, I know Zoom may not be the best, but just using that as an example, Zoom or WebEx or some other system, and people can dial into that system? What, what is the issue around that? Because you're not controlling, if I'm understanding correctly, that's not an issue of people dialing into that, having security issues with what council meeting is? Or am I misunderstanding?
Councilmember Kitchen, the, the main issue with that is just the, the same thing as it is with, with our, with y'all's WebEx. The security and integrity of the meeting, the possibility of the meeting being overwhelmed because the link was shared to thousands of some group that had some malicious intent on taking the speaker WebEx down. The vendor-managed option would be more secure in that it is vendor-managed, and they're able to work with the members of the public one-on-one as they connect, to test audio and, and their video before bringing them on inside the council chambers.
Okay, so it's not a technical issue. It's more an issue of how, if I'm understanding correctly, it's not a technical issue, it's more of an issue of how you admit somebody into, into a meeting? And, and the man, the, the person power it takes to do that, as opposed to just giving everybody the link so that they can sign on? Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
Partly, and like I said, it, it has to do with the, the security and integrity of, integrity of the WebEx meeting, being able to keep the WebEx meeting running in a, running well and performing well, and the possibility of the meeting being flooded or overwhelmed is, is the main, is the main issue.
Okay, so it's, it's, that would be a matter of too many people signing on? I'm trying to get to the specifics. When you talk about security and integrity, I want to know exactly what we're talking about here. And if I'm understanding correctly, what you're talking about is, it's not that people can't call in and sign on, it's just that, we're all familiar with, over the last year having to do this, how do you, how do you manage a meeting such that, A, you don't have too many people signing in, and that you have some order to it in terms of if people are speaking? Right? So that's what we're talking about here, is how to manage the meeting, right? And when you say security or integrity, are you talking about so many people that you could take down a system or some other aspect of it, that you could take the meeting down?
Yes, ma'am, that's what I'm talking about.
Okay. So, so that's what you're trying, that's what the vendor's trying to solve for, is the controls that are in place on the number of people that can actually sign into a meeting or, and who they are. Right? And is that not an issue for telephone participation? Is that a different issue for video?
Councilmember Kitchen, you're gonna have to repeat that question. I apologize, I can't hear.
So we do this right now for telephone. Is the kind of control issue that you're talking about now, in terms of the concerns of having too many people, too many people having a link so that they can sign in and, and take down a system, or otherwise lose control of the meeting, is that for video? Or is it a, is it an issue that we've had to deal with and we've figured out a way to deal with it for, for telephone?
So for our teleconference that we're bringing public into our meetings, that is a vendor-managed process. But, I mean, to, to answer your question, if I, if I can understand you correctly, and, and we can take this offline and have the discussion too, but the, the, the main issue is, you know, will the WebEx get overwhelmed because someone shared the WebEx link with a group-
Sure.
-that had malicious intent and, and too many people join?
Sure.
We can, we can certainly look at different ways to try and secure the meeting, but that is gonna be a very manual process, and it could be something that require more staff resources to manage. I mean, I, I do understand your question.
Does it make sense for us, Anne, to say as a council that we would really like our staff to take a look at, try to figure out how it is that people can participate remotely and sign in remotely? And those are two technical questions you say you don't know the answer to, but if you could, does it make sense to ask our staff to, to go away and try to come back with what the solution would be, if any, to those two things?
Yes, I think it does, and that was, that's something that I was getting to, is that I would like to ask you all to do that, but, and I hear what you're saying, that that's one of the things you're working with the vendor on. I'd like to understand the timeline, and I'd also like to understand what other cities have done, and then so perhaps we could move relatively quickly on getting that information from you.
And if there's a way to set those up for September 30th, that'd be great. And if there's not, you know, get back to us and tell us what you're doing and, and what the process is gonna be.
So, so Mayor, I'd like a little bit more clarity around that.
Okay.
What I'm, what I'm asking Cory, primarily Cory, to do is to, is to, you know, get back to us with a, with a memo. Is it something you could get back to us within a week or so? Or where, where are you at on, on putting that information together for us?
If, I can certainly send a memo out by the end of next week.
Okay.
That would work.
And I would like to contact you off and talk with you offline. Others may want to participate too, which is fine, but I'd like to dig into the details, so.
And Councilmember Kitchen, just to clarify, some of the, the difference with the audio is, we are actually calling the individual. They are not calling us, so they don't actually even have the number. The only time they get a dial-in number is during the council meeting, if they've lost connection and they email me, and I have confirmed that they are a registered speaker, then I give them a code that allows them to dial back in. But previously, they don't even have a number. We're the ones calling them versus them calling us. So they don't have a number to share.
I, I, I understand, and why would, why could we not? So, so my question to you then, and you don't have to answer it now, is why could we not do the same thing for video? It's just a matter of the code that you're giving them.
Well, because I can't call someone to have them join for a video.
You can call them and give them the code. I mean, we can talk about this offline, but, but that's one of the things I want to understand, so.
And I would, I would just ask you to remember, sometimes we have hundreds of speakers that you're asking us to call with a code.
So my sense is, we're not gonna solve this on the dais, right? And Anne would like to be part of that process, and I think that's great. But if you could get back to us about looking at, I think those are the two technology, technology questions? Can people participate remotely and can people sign up ahead of time? Take into account the technology, take into account cost, if that's gonna go, take into account security issues, but, but also talk to vendors, and as Councilmember Kitchen said, maybe talk to other people. I mean, you imagine somebody's doing this somewhere to, to be able to find it, but to see if you can find that. We're just not gonna be able to solve this on the dais. It's almost four o'clock, and we still have the presentation on the urban thing, and I just wanna have us work for stuff we can actually solve or decide.
I, I get that-
Anne, you wanna close that? Go ahead.
I have one last question. I would also suggest, if it's helpful to you, and, and I know that, that you know what you're doing here, Cory, so, but if it's helpful to you, you might also speak to the Awesome Tech Alliance. They have helped us solve for other issues in the past, and they may just have some information that might be useful for you.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Councilmember Arthur, yeah? Sorry, manager, did you want to say something?
Yes, I would, I'm just, mine also wanted also, if the city clerk could also give us how many people that she's gonna need to run this operation.
Mayor, just a word of appreciation for our staff that is working very hard, not only throughout this pandemic, but as we transition back to in-person, how we might be able to accommodate more of our community. I'll just note for the memo that would come back at the end of next week, you know, there will be some updates, but it'll be also what remaining questions and issues that we're looking into, and some general timeframe in which we might be able to get you answers. And so just to manage your expectations, that we're not gonna be able to answer all these questions by the end of next week, but we should be able to outline some of these key themes that we're hearing, and what avenues we might be pursuing to help provide clarity for council on a path forward.
Okay, thank you. So one other question, so on a meeting on September 30th, it looks like we're gonna set those up for batches. Councilmember Tovo said, asked the question, could we also do it in a hybrid kind of way? Could we also have people, if they want to speak in the morning, they could sign up and speak upon that? If they wanted to wait till the item came up, they would have the opportunity to do that too. Logistically, I'm not sure exactly how to do that. Kathy, if somebody comes in and we've said what we think is gonna be on the consent agenda, and somebody wants to speak on something that ends up, they don't, they don't know at that point whether it's getting pulled or not, necessarily. So they're here in the morning, they're, they're able to speak on it in the morning if it's not being pulled, but I'm not sure they would know whether it was being pulled or not before they had to make the election to speak in the morning or not. Does that make sense?
Well, wouldn't it work the same way it did? And I do have a question that I need to ask about Thursday before we move on, but-
Yeah.
Wouldn't it work the same way it did before the pandemic, where, you know, you read out the consent agenda, you let us know which items have been pulled because of council members having pulled them, or because of a number of speakers? And then we hear from the speakers, you know, whether they're, whether they're over the phone or video or in-person, we hear from the speakers who have signed up on the, on consent agenda items. If it's been pulled from the consent agenda, but they want to speak about it now, they speak about it now. Right?
What about items-
Something, but I think it works just the same way it always did, with the exception of if we've pulled item number 90, because council members have pulled it, we would allow that person to speak now, even though we're not gonna take it up later. I think that's the, I think that would be the only change from our pre-pandemic process.
What if somebody, what if an item gets pulled after people have spoken? And someone says, if you're gonna pull it, I want to speak later, but it hasn't been pulled yet, so I'm going to speak now, and then it gets pulled later?
Well, I guess, Mayor, we just do the best we can as council. I mean, usually when that happens, it's a council member, or you say, hey, your questions are more extensive than we thought, so I think we should pull it. I mean, and those, you know, I think we just all are gonna have to do the best we can to, to be really clear about which items we're gonna pull before, before the members of the public, before we hear from them on the consent agenda, and now and then, there's gonna be something that, you know, we, I mean, I, I think the, I think the times where that's going to happen are probably gonna be you.
And I find-
Usually we know what we're gonna pull before people start speaking, and then sometimes we add to it, but we'll just, we'll just all try to make a better effort of, before people start speaking, you know, have a, a really exhaustive list of the things we're gonna pull.
Councilor Kassar, I'll get back to you.
I, I agree with that, that if there's gonna be, that if people want to stay and speak on a pulled item, that we just have them all talk then, and here, unless I heard that there was some inefficiency with that, I think that works fine for us, and sometimes it's more fresh, and usually we've pulled it. I, I agree with, I think, Councilmember Tovo saying, one change is, is that folks could just speak in the, in the morning, even if it's pulled for later. The second change that I had mentioned in my comments, that I think is better for everyone, is that if a council member, if no council members on the dais are pulling an item, that, that speakers sign up and speak on it in the batch in the morning. The reason being that, that either happens when all the speakers are for it anyway, and it's gonna pass, so why have all the staff and people wait? Or second, if, you know, a couple of speakers want to register their dissent, but it's an, it's an 11-0 consensus item, then it still gives those speakers the opportunity to talk. But if no council members are interested in pulling it, then we don't keep our staff and, and keep the item hanging out. So those, I think, are the only two differences. But I do, I agree, Councilmember Tovo, that often we might have people who aren't gonna say what the mayor said, hey, I've waited 10 hours to give my two minutes. There oftentimes are a group of people who want to stay and watch the vote and want to go and come and talk at that time, and we should, we can allow that at their choice.
So what we're gonna do, you know, what I understand is, we do the two batches. People have ability to be able to talk in the morning on those things, on zoning, they could talk first. If they want to talk later, and the item was pulled, they get a chance to talk later. If, if they speak in, in the morning, they don't speak if it ultimately gets pulled, and that's gonna be our discipline. So the other change is, speakers don't pull items, only council members do, and we're all going to endeavor to do a better job of pulling things so that somebody strategically knows whether to speak now or whether to speak later. Yes, Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you. Not to really circle back to what Councilmember Kitchen brought up, but Cory, if I could ask you another question real quick, it seemed like you had mentioned, and maybe I was incorrect, but you said that it was currently under development, the software that you were looking at possibly utilizing for video conferencing, is that correct? So it's not fully developed yet, right?
Yeah. Councilmember Kelly, yes, I'm speaking to a, the same vendor that we used for teleconferencing during the pandemic-
Okay.
-is developing a system that, where they can manage bringing public testimony in via video to, to public meetings. This is, this is their business, it's just what they do. And yes, that is currently under development and near, near completion, from what I understand.
Okay, so I guess my concern there is that it won't be ready before future meetings. So I'm wondering if in the memo you might be able to provide us with options that are similar to what our current vendor provides, that might do the same thing, if that's a possibility.
All right. It's, it's most likely that the library will be, libraries will be ready to at least pilot some sort of program where we could allow public testimony from different libraries. So that's a more likely solution, but I will follow up with the vendor and get back to y'all.
Okay, thank you.
So another item for us to discuss might be how much time speakers have. What we've done for the last year and a half, generally speaking, is we've tried to do the meetings so that the speakers that speak in the morning batch, we try to, to kind of have the universe of time of people to speak, such that we have a shot at actually being able to vote on the consent agenda in the morning, and speakers have a chance to, to, to speak. If there were a lot of speakers- If there were a lot of speakers in that first batch, in order to still preserve that opportunity, we, we cut back on the amount of time that those speakers had. But the goal was to try and get us 12, 12:30 pass those speakers and pass a quick vote on the consent, but not any of the pulled items. The closer we can get to noon, the more we can get to, to citizen communication speakers. Reason we did that was that gave us time for lunch, it gave us time for executive session, and then at 2:00, we had another batch of speakers. We were trying really hard to get the first batch done in the morning before we had the second batch of speakers speak. So we have to be speakers that speak at 2:00 in the afternoon. We tried to take a look and see how many of items we thought were going to get pulled that were going to have to be part of our afternoon work in addition to the zoning cases that we had, recognizing that those speakers were going to speak beginning at 2:00 and trying to, to limit us to just, you know, an hour or two hours on speakers so that, you know, we had, you know, if you have two hours of speakers speak at 2:00, that gets you to 4:00 in the afternoon, and you still haven't handled the pulled items from the morning or the pulled items on the agenda. So based on the number of items that people seem to be pulling, it was on the agenda and, and that, we then, you know, adjusted that timing to, to be able to, to do the other. So it's how much time people have. And then there was the question of when you spoke at that point, did you speak on multiple items? And did you have time that was shared? So we don't, you know, you don't see it all the time when we have multiple. We have, you know, some people that, that, that like the opportunity to be able to speak to us on multiple matters. Sometimes they get donated time. If you have one person who speaks for three minutes, gets one donated person six minutes, and if they could speak on five different items, we could have someone come to the dais and speak to us for 30 minutes in the morning or in the, in the afternoon. And we, we've just set up a system that, that recognizes that and has given everybody a chance to be able to talk, but at the same time has tried to preserve an opportunity for us to, to get work done in, in a, in a manner that lets people have a shot at maybe having, going home and having dinner with the family or, or being at home in this job. So the, the three questions associated with timing is how much time do people have? Can it vary on days based on the workload that we have and how people signed up? Can you share time, which is, we haven't done in the last year and a half? And, and do you have to speak for everything within that allotted time? Or do you get multiples of that allotted time? Those, I think, are the three questions on speaker timing. Councilmember Fuentes.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to speak to the first one and looking at how we structure our day, I really like what you laid out and how we have been doing it this year in terms of looking at how many speakers we have signed up and trying to apportion their minute allotment based on the number of speakers we have so that we can take a vote on the consent agenda before noon. I think that's a really good way of doing it. I think for us to be more efficient with our council meetings and laying things out so that we're able to discuss business before it gets really late into the night, you know, taking big, important votes late at night is not, is something I hope that we could do very sparingly. And so if we can plan out our day so that individuals know that, you know, if you're on the, if it's a consent agenda item, you can speak in the morning and have that, that timeframe allowed, that'd be helpful. Thank you.
Councilmember Tovo?
Yeah, Mayor, I, I just want to point out, I don't know that we have a consensus on, I think Gret, Councilmember Kassar and I, I believe, are the only ones who weighed in on the issue related to who, how many, how things get pulled from the consent agenda. And I made my point earlier, but then Greg made his again, and now we're back to that being the assumption of how we're going to operate. So I think our council rules, our approved council rules indicate that if two members of the public have signed up to speak against something, it's pulled from the consent agenda. So that, as I understand it, would require, you know, making a, a different decision, which if it's the will of the group to do so, you know, we certainly could. I have some reservations about that. I would rather we came up with a different threshold if that's, you know, if, if we found that, that we want to make that change. Maybe the threshold isn't two, maybe it's five or something like that. You know, as I think about the issues where we have overwhelming support, if not an 11-0 vote, you know, overwhelming support on council, I mean, those tend to be issues where there's been a lot of, sometimes, excitement in the community to come and talk about something. But I agree, it does often take away from, from our conversations about other issues. And so, you know, I, I don't know that our time is best spent hearing from dozens and dozens of speakers talking about an issue where we know it's going to pass. But, you know, we have in the past made a decision as a council to allow, to allow the public to participate in those ways. At the same time, there are times where, where those two speakers who have asked us to take a look, a careful look at something on the consent agenda raise a point that some of us haven't thought of. And, and I can't think of an example right now, but, but I believe there have been times where that actually, you know, opened up questions for, for our council that, you know, we then had to deliberate on. And so, you know, a couple, even though it's just two people, you know, those, those two voices can be significant. So again, I would, I would just ask, maybe that threshold isn't correct, isn't the right one. We could also, you know, I'm, I mean, there's obviously a workaround here. If I'm the only one who is, who is interested in, in, in that issue, you know, I can try to look at the, the issues where people are signing up on it. And if we have a significant number of the public who are concerned about an item and have signed up on the consent agenda but don't have the ability to pull it under new rules, you know, I can pull that as a council member so that, you know, that, I could handle it as an individual choice. But I just want to highlight that, that, that is a point where we've had two different opinions about, and it would be good to have a little more dialogue either today or in the future about it. And on Thursday, I have gotten the question about video testimony, as I mentioned. But the question really is this. Our, our rules are what they are, it's in-person testimony only. In the past, we've allowed an individual to show a video. And so the question I'm getting from the public is, is that allowed? Can somebody come and sign up at City Hall and then show a video testimony from someone else? And I would assume, consistent with our past practice, the answer would be yes. But just want to, just want to make sure that that's, that's still something we're set up to do.
Yes, if that person has their three-minute or whatever their time allotment is, that's theirs to use, and they can certainly use it that way.
We would just ask that those videos be submitted hopefully prior to the meeting so that we can get them moved over and pulled, ready to pull up so that we have them.
Thank you.
And on the other question, Kathy, about whether people could pull their own items? That didn't, I mean, I, I had tried to raise that in the last conversation we had and focused on that issue. But I'm happy that you pulled it back up again if that wasn't something that was, that was clear or decided. Which is why I'd asked the question, what about, and I gave you the hypothetical situation under that scenario, and I thought we had moved past it. But doesn't stop us from, from continuing in that conversation here. Anne?
Oh, I just wanted to say, since Councilmember Tovo raised it, I have the same concerns that she has with regard to pulling items, I, you know. And I also feel like if we're going to, I think some of, some of our requirements are in writing. I mean, I think we have a written policy. I thought we did this, you know, through a resolution. So if we're going to be changing things, we need to do it with a resolution, I think, if I'm remembering correctly. But on this one particular item that Councilmember Tovo raised, I, I do agree with her on that and, and not seeing the need to change it.
And, and you're right, but whatever we do, we should pass a resolution ultimately doing it. You know, in any particular instance, we have as a body have the ability to be able to decide how we handle those kinds of procedural rules. And certainly that can always go to, to a vote of the council members together if anybody asks for, for that kind of thing. I'm just, you know, I'm just trying to, to see, I, I just feel, I have always felt badly when people are waiting all day to be able to, to do something, and they're waiting, 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 and then dinner comes, and then it's after dinner, and they come up, and I have always felt guilty as they testify. And I think that, I mean, that some of the things that we've done, I think, I think have helped us. And there are always trade-offs involved in something like that. So I was comfortable, as Councilmember Kassar had suggested, where people didn't pull items. Council members could pull items if they wanted to. And then recognizing that, you know, on any given item, any one of us can call anybody up that they want to to, to speak to it. But we could certainly see if anybody else wants to talk about that or we could, we could take a quick vote on that to, to see where, where people were. Yes, Mayor O'Toole.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Natasha.
I don't know that it's, it's here nor there as it pertains to this particular line of questioning. I will say this, though. Feedback from our constituents consistently, the complaints are access or the lack thereof and how long our council meetings take. They cannot wrap their heads around why we deliberate what feels like endlessly over items. And so I just wanted to put that out there as a primary source of complaint I hear from, from, from the one constituents.
Councilmember Kitchen?
Our meetings are just too long.
Councilmember Kitchen?
Yeah, I don't think that we can vote right now on this particular issue that you're raising. We don't have anything in backup to vote on, and plus we're in a work session. So my thought is that if, you know, if someone wants to bring forward this change, if, if I'm remembering correctly, because I know we voted in the past on various procedures, but if I'm remembering correctly that there's a written document that has these procedures, then, then if someone wants to bring forward that change, that's fine, and then we can vote on it at that time. But I don't see how we can vote right now.
I think you're probably right on that. I mean, if there's a consensus on, if we need to vote on something, I think it does have to come back that way. What about timing? Does anybody else want to, to address that? I guess, I guess what we could do is I could just come back, or somebody could come back with a proposed list of, of, of rules on, on how we should handle things. I could come back with a list that talks about how we've done it the last year and a half, and that people could make changes to it. And then there's actually a document in front of us for people to, to edit. We could post something to the message board in our long delay here. Does anybody want to raise any other issues or talk about any of the other elements? Donation of time, how much time speakers have, whether one time is for a speaker to speak on all their items? Councilmember Kitchen?
I think, I think I understood you correctly. I just wanted to make sure that I understood. So if we're, if we're going to bring any changes up, we should do it in such a way that the public has the opportunity to comment on, and if, if we're going to vote on something. So, so I think that's what you meant when you, when you were talking about posting on the message board. I just wanted to clarify that we would just use our normal processes and have something proposed that we were going to vote on so that people would know we were voting on it and that could go. But I, I couldn't tell, I think that's what you meant, but I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, we're not voting on anything today. The rules we use on the last meeting of September will be the rules that we, that, that the majority of the council wants to, to use. So just like we, we have a set base policy, that's kind of, you know, where we start from. And if there are changes for that, you know, we've posted that recommendation ahead of time, and the council could always say no to those things. Council can do that for the last meeting of September. And if anybody wants to raise any of those things for a vote, we can have that vote. But I'll try to get something out that identifies all of these various issues ahead of time. But the, so we'll handle it the same, with, not necessarily the same outcome. We'll handle it as we've been doing the last year and a half and before that, where ultimately on any given meeting, the majority decides how that meeting goes. All right, anything else people want to talk about before we go to the next? Jeanette?
Mayor and council, we will get back to you with options. I will reach out to other cities, but as far as I know, I have not seen anyone that is doing video testimony. Most of them are, are, we're doing audio, and most of them are starting to come back in-person only with maybe an option for the audio, which will expire at midnight tonight. But I will reach out to them, but as far as I have seen and heard, nobody is offering video at this time.
Great, thank you. Go ahead, put that in the memo at the end of next week, too. Myron DeJeff, something?
Yes, I guess since we're having this discussion, we will, we'll need some dialogue or instruction in the near future on how we will proceed with boards and commissions. We need clarity from the mayor and council, and then likely the law department to ensure that they're meeting statutory requirements with regard to also wanting to maintain virtual public comment.
So I think it would be helpful, too, in that memo, if you could, to put in a, a section on boards and commission. Obviously, the boards and the commissions are asking the same kind of questions for their meetings that we're asking for here. Gets a little bit more complex because some of those are televised and some of those are not televised. I don't know exactly how all the rules relate in the same kind of way for sovereign versus non-sovereign boards from state law. There are also some local requirements that we've put in that are not necessarily followed from state law. But I think generally the questions are the same. What flexibility, if any, exists for boards and commissions to have people participate remotely? Speakers and/or members of the, of the board itself, the commission itself? So if you could address that, in that context, that would be helpful, too. And maybe that would help us put our hands, our arms around those issues in that context.
And then I will just close with just a reminder to everyone that as far as I can tell, we would be probably the first large city that would be trying to accomplish such a thing. So I would just ask for your patience because this is probably going to be a learning experience for all of us as we try to figure out how this is going to work and whether or not it is viable long-term.
And I think that's real important, so thank you. I mean, I don't think anybody necessarily comes into it prejudging any of that stuff, so. You know, some of the requests, you may come back and say, it's possible, but it's going to cost a lot, and it's going to present security concerns. And if you want to put in recommendations at this point from your perspective, that'd be fine, too. But just to kind of help identify the issues for us so we can put our arms around it. Thank you.